Good evening. Welcome to the February 6th work session for the Cabarrus County Board of Education. I'd like to welcome Ms. Angie McLean, our Teacher of the Year, also our board members, Mr. Sam Tredaway, Mr. Tim Furr, our Superintendent, Dr. John Kapiki, our Vice Chair, Rob Walter, our Board Member, Ms. Pam Escobar, and Ms. Kristy Williams. And I'd like to also recognize that Keisha Sandage is here, and she is joining our meeting remotely. So with that being said, at this time, we will move to 1.01, and I'll call the February 6th work session to order. We'll move to 2.01, the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will rise.
(inaudible) To the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, we will move to 3.01, Adopt the Agenda. At this time, I call for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
No motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Furr and a second by Mr. Tredaway. Is there any discussion, board members? Hearing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, board members. The agenda is adopted as presented. We will now move to 4.01, Board Chair Comments. I want to take a moment to thank our board members for their contribution and engagement in preparing the agenda for our board retreat, which was held on Saturday, January 21st, at Roberta Road Middle School. It was a great success. I'd also like to thank the board members for their participation in development of three new board goals during the retreat for the year 2023. Here are the three goals that Cabarrus County Board of Education developed and has implemented. The CCS BoE will focus on school culture by attending or presenting during the RISE event for the purpose of influencing a more positive district culture. Number two, the CCS BoE will prepare and develop the CCS legislative agenda for the purpose of advocating for the children in Cabarrus County schools with our state and local legislators. Number three, the CCS BoE will engage in a community event once a month for the purpose of connecting with our community and improving community engagement. Here is a comment that I received from a member of our community who attended the board retreat in person. "Thank you for allowing the public to attend. I enjoyed watching all of you collaborate on ways to improve education for our students. Each and every one of you shared thoughtful ideas or asked important questions, an all-hands-on-deck approach with everyone united and working as a team. It's exactly what our district needs." Thank you. So I just want to say how proud I am of our board members and the collaboration that exists between us. It is clear that we want our community to know that we are united to do what's best for the students in Cabarrus County, and I'm honored to serve with all of you. Together, we are making a difference in our district. With that being said, we will go to our next item on the agenda, which is 4.02, and I'll turn it over to Dr. John Kapiki, our Superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Atcock. Just several announcements to make, and again, I thank you for coming and speaking to our administrators. That was well received and deeply appreciated, and it just emphasized the sense of team that our administrators feel when our board and all of us are working together. So I definitely appreciate that and appreciate the support of the board and working with our administrative team. So thank you for that. First thing I want to report of is the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction was recently awarded roughly $17 million in grant funding from the United States Department of Education to help meet the mental health needs of students in the state's public schools. This funding, called Project FAST, will enable NCDPI to leverage partnerships with institutions of higher education and 15 school districts to increase the number and diversity of mental health service providers in high-need schools. Starting this month and continuing through 2027, these grants will help the state bolster the pipeline of school-based mental health service providers, including school counselors, school social workers, and school mental health clinicians. We attended our first meeting on the Project FAST with the state DPI representatives this week, and I'm pleased to inform the board and our community that we are going to receive $490,000 for the next five years to support these mental health service provider needs, including counselors, social workers, and mental health clinicians. So right now, we are working on assigning a project coordinator, working with our CFO, Carol Herndon, and creating a work plan to address and develop our first year's budget and prepare to put these resources in place to help our students with some of their mental health needs. You know, we've all talked a great deal about student health and the mental health needs that our kids have. This is one where we're going to be able to help them. So this grant comes at perfect timing and helps us greatly to make sure that we can do that. So I'm very pleased and thankful and grateful that that applies to our district, and we're going to receive that money for the next five years. So it was a welcome addition to our resources for that particular need. February is also designated as Career and Technical Education Month. Currently, Cabarrus County Schools has 21,269 middle and high school students enrolled in a CTE course. This is an astounding number and speaks to the quality of our district's CTE programs. I want to congratulate all of our CTE teachers and all of the staff for their hard work in making Cabarrus County a CTA state model, and I would argue a national model for career and technical education. Congratulations, folks. There's also School Counselors Week, so the week of February 6th is the School Counselors' Week, and in Cabarrus County, our school counselors work directly with students to help them expand on academic and life skills. They're often the silent heroes in our school buildings. In elementary school, counselors help children learn important safety and social-emotional skills that last throughout their lives. Middle school is a challenging time for many children, and school counselors are there to support their healthy decision-making. And in high school, the counselors provide academic advisement and emotional skill development to help our young people launch into success as they head into college or a career. At every school level, our counselors focus on life after school, and they are truly helping students dream big. I want to shout out to our counselors in the Cabarrus County school system and thank them for all the work that they do in helping our students on a daily basis. Their work is deeply needed and deeply appreciated. It is also February, so February is a time when we always celebrate the Black History Month, and Cabarrus County Schools is proud to celebrate the accomplishments and achievements and contributions that African Americans have made to our county, state, nation, and our world's history. Our schools have many activities planned. I would ask everyone to check their school's webpage for information and to visit our schools and to see all the wonderful things that we are doing in our schools for the two weeks now, which is Black History Month. Last few things, I'd like to thank Senator Newton, Representative Baker, and Representative Crutchfield for spending some time with us this past week. Myself and Mrs. Atcock were able to go to Raleigh and visit with our representatives and to talk to them about the legislative agenda that our board has put forth and to advocate for our schools. And I'm pleased to tell you that we had very good, strong, healthy conversation, and I can assure you that Senator Newton, Representative Baker, Representative Crutchfield understand our needs and are strongly advocating for us and supporting the Cabarrus County Schools. So I thank them for that. Lastly, I'm pleased to announce that Weddington Hills Elementary has once again been acknowledged and recognized as a national magnet school of America. So it's a national magnet school of excellence, and they will be coming to a future board meeting where we can acknowledge that. And that's a great accomplishment that Chastity Dolan and her faculty and staff continue to achieve, and I really commend them for that because they do not lower their expectation. They continue to keep them high, to continue to achieve this national award. It is not an easy thing to attain, so I commend her leadership for continuing to be a magnet school of excellence. And I'm also pleased to announce that Odell Elementary and the leadership of Dr. Sandy Ward has been designated a prestigious Blue Ribbon School nominee. There are only nine schools in the state of North Carolina that receive this nomination, and Odell Elementary right now is in the running for becoming a national Blue Ribbon School. So we will keep you up to date on that as it moves forward, but again, I commend Dr. Ward, her faculty, and her staff for the excellence that they continue to exhibit at Odell Elementary and is throughout the Cabarrus County school systems. But it's always nice to have our schools recognized at a national level and a national basis and to acknowledge the leadership that's taking place in the schools under the administration and the faculty and staff. So I commend the teachers and always want to say to the teachers as I travel throughout the schools. I was able to be in Coltrane Web today, and I started my morning there, and it's just inspiring to see the teachers as they work on a daily basis with our kids and the work that they do. You know, at times, they're so busy, I can walk right by them, and I don't even think they see me there, and I know they don't because they're so engaged with the kids, but it's a...I can tell you that you have really good, solid educational practices taking place in our schools and the Cabarrus County school system, and it's a pleasure to walk through the building and see the excellence that our teachers demonstrate on a daily basis. So I thank them, and I want to commend them, and let's not ever forget that when we see a teacher, to thank them and share that gratitude with them because they are taking care of the most precious resource in our community, which are our children. And that's all I have. Thank you.
(inaudible).
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. And then lastly, we have some visitors here this evening that are going to speak before I close out. And thank you, Mrs. Atcock and Mr. Walter for reminding me. But Donna Carpenter and her team are here today from the Cabarrus Visitors Bureau to talk about an initiative that they brought to us a little while back. I think they're excited to make an announcement that's going to be official, and they have the support of the county and I'm hoping the board as well, and I'm not going to steal your thunder, but I'm going to leave the surprising...
(inaudible).
Leave the surprising announcement to you. So, Mrs. Carpenter, it's yours.
Thank you. And I have to say, again, John Full, who is our CEO of Sales and Services. So, the last time I was in front of you, I think there's some new faces, but I'm Donna Carpenter. I'm the President and CEO of the Cabarrus County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And just a quick reminder, we are funded...
Can you just...I'm sorry. Can you hit one of the...either one of...there you go.
There we go. Sorry about that. I forget every time. Just as a quick reminder, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is funded by occupancy tax collection, and that is the bed tax that you pay when you spend the night in a hotel. And so it is mostly generated by our visitors, and we are legislated by the state of North Carolina to spend that money on tourism-related items. So with that said, so that's why people are always like, well, why are you at the school board meeting? Well, we, our board, actually was...I'm super excited to say that they approved the Mondo Track project. I think you all have received the handouts that we brought, and so our Board of Directors surprised us and pleasantly surprised us to expend up to $1.5 million to construct a Mondo Track at JM Robinson High School. Now, you might say, why JM Robinson High School? Why not any of the other schools? Well, when we went into the Turf Field Project, Project X, with the school the last time, we explained that because we are looking at this from a tourism standpoint, we had to pick a school that is the closest to the hotels that we can. And those three schools are Cox Mill High School, West Cabarrus, and JM Robinson. And looking at the track facilities at all three of those, the one in most need is the JM Robinson High School track, and on top of that, all of our event rights holders that we have hosted that have utilized all three of those high schools, they all hands down prefer the layout of the parking lot at JM Robinson High School. It's much more conducive to get traffic in and out. And so that is why we landed on JM Robinson High School. And I'm going to let John talk for just a quick second about the Mondo Track, and we have some pictures, I think.
Right. Want to hit that side?
Oh, do I do that?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I brought a piece of Mondo Track, so you can actually just take this and actually feel this and understand what this is all about.
Can you cut your microphone on?
I was going to say, I'm going to turn mine on. So let me first start by saying this is the most sought-after track.
There.
Most sought-after track, and everybody wants to run on one, and that's the opportunity in front of us. There is a need for this. Currently in the state, there are six outdoor tracks, and all of them are very old. These have a life of 20 years, and they've got to be 14 to 16 years old, the ones that are currently in the state being used. Now, there are two indoor tracks, and again, they're just old. That's the unfortunate part about it. So there's the need that arises. It's a win-win situation for the destination, for the schools, and obviously for the students because they're the ones who will practice on it and compete on it on a regular basis. The Mondo Track that you're feeling right there, apparently you can run fast on it.[908.73][908.73](laughter) But the reality part of it is, is you'll see, it's very spring. It's like a springboard. So when you do run it, you feel that effect. It's a shock absorber, reduces injury, and the lifespan, as I mentioned, is 20 years with that Mondo Track. With regards to economic impact, the reality part of it is, is there's people or customers out there that are excited about this opportunity already, and I put up six opportunities on the next slide. And one more.
You might want to back up on this one.
Actually, yeah, you're right. The track that you're seeing right here on the left-hand side is a what will be at JM Robinson. You'll see on the left, there's two chutes, is what they call them, and that's where they start the 100 meters and 200-meter dashes and the hurdles, and they have them on both ends because of wind direction, and take it that way. You'll also see on the left-hand side pits for long jump and triple jump, and then the D-zone at the bottom of the track is where the steeple chase pit is and pole vaulting and those kind of things. So that's what a track will look like. And then on the next slide, you see on the right-hand side, it actually will go to the school colors, so we can, when we put this in, we can have the school colors meshed to that. Now, with regards to economic impact, I started talking to some coaches and some opportunities, and these six that came up were very interested in working with us in 2024, and I'm going, well, timeout here. We don't even have this thing approved in that side. So what I want you to pay attention to is the number of athletes and the number of spectators, and what I don't know is the number of families. So it's hard to get an actual economic impact, but when we ran it through the system, there's easily a $2.1 million impact with just six events. And as you'll see on the bottom, there's New Balance Nationals, the Special Olympics, the State Games, Conference USA, Early Bird Invitational, and a number of other opportunities for us to go after.
And I think that is all we have on this. If you have any questions, we are happy to answer those.
So board members, just let me know if you have a question. Ms. Escobar?
Thank you so much for bringing this information. You were at the county earlier?
Yes.
And how did that go?
They approved it. It will be on their consent agenda, and they did ask what the school board thought, and I said, well, we don't know. We're on our way.
Okay.
So here we are.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Well, it seems like a no-brainer to me. What do we need...what do you need from us?
Well, we would like to...what we would prefer that we do is the contract that we would enter into between the school and the CVB will be just like the contract that we have with the Turf Field Projects, which gives the CVB the first to write a refusal after school athletics to be able to utilize and secure the facility. And then the financial component to this is we will work through the county commissioners, and they will actually expend the payments to GeoServices, but the contract for the actual track facility will be between the school and GeoServices.
So then our focus will be Brian and his team will be involved?
Yes, and they have all of this documentation, as well as the bid.
Great. Well, exciting news. Thanks for coming and sharing that with us.
You're welcome.
I'm going to give Ms. Sandage. Do you have any questions?
I do not. Thanks for the presentation.
Okay. Anybody else, board members?
Donna, this is the...you're going to operate off the same MOU we have as what you're referring to, correct? Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. This is excellent. Thank you for your investment in this track at JM Robinson High School. We really appreciate all you do for our community.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, can't forget that.[1172.13][1172.13](laughter)
Okay, board members, we will move to 4.03, Attorney Comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things that we wanted to talk about or that I was asked to present on is in regards to some bills that have come up. One of the bills that I think is important for y'all to be aware of is House Bill 49. It's labeled the Parents' Bill of Rights. This is similar to a bill that was introduced last year. It's broken down into three parts. The first is the Parents' Bill of Rights, and that Part 1 really talks about education matters for FERPA records, HIPAA, healthcare decisions. And then Part 2 is parental guides and notifications, what it requires the school to establish in policies and providing information to involve parents and their children's education. And then Section 3 is parental authorization for healthcare of minors. That has a little bit to do with the schools, but more with some healthcare that minors actually have a decision...they have a decision-making authority in at certain ages. I can break that down, but it's very long, so I can do...I can break it down in pieces or talk about it. Right now, that bill is in the Operations and Rules and Operations Committee. They're supposed to meet tomorrow. They have probably, I would say, at least 20-plus other bills that they're going to address. It was introduced on January 31st. It got amended a little bit on February 1st, so this is a bill that we want to keep an eye on, and it's going to be some changes. So as it changes, I will update the board. There is another part, another bill that's interesting, is that there's a bill in the legislature, House Bill 17, that is recommending a constitutional amendment that will change, in essence, change the board makeup, the state Board of Education makeup, to really be appointed and confirmed by the General Assembly. So that's going to be changed. That is a bill that's introduced that has not really gone anywhere for the most part. Another one is, we've...y'all have talked about accountability of the grading of schools, ABC. House Bill 26 is a bill to reform school accountability model. There are some deadlines on this one that the North Carolina Department of Instruction is supposed to be getting back to the legislature. By April 15th, they're supposed to review a statewide model and determine the comparability of other states to North Carolina and how those states were determined to be comparable. And by February 15th of 2024, so a year from now, suggested changes to the school evaluation model. So that's something that I will keep on apprising or keep you up to speed on. There is one thing that I think is important, and another one is House Bill 4, and Representative Baker from Cabarrus is a co-sponsor on this, a primary sponsor. That increases engagement in the STEM Grant Program. It's trying to encourage and get kids in middle school more interested in the STEM programs and provide some funding for the STEM programs. And then lastly, another bill that's important is House Bill 23, and I'm pronouncing it G-O-O-R-U, G-O-O-R-U, Contract. What that contract is, is the legislature is pulling $9 million out to contract or having or ordering North Carolina DPI to contract with G-O-O-R-U to address the negative educational impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. So those are some of the bills that have been introduced. It's...legislation's not really gotten much steam, so they're just introducing them, and as we get it, I'll let you know of some other bills that have come up, but that's where we are right now.
Board members, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Sandage?
Can someone give just a little bit of context to what happens and like procedures that take place once a bill has become law? I don't want us to go, you know, over and yawn, but just some context so that people know, you know, hey, it's being discussed and it's here. When it becomes law, this is how we proceed forward.
So that would be from guidance of Dr. Kapiki, but like, say, House Bill 49, Ms. Sandage, is...House Bill 49 requires the school board to adopt various policies that will conform to House Bill 49 in notifying parents of certain...of some of their rights so that the school system would be looking at, or the Board of Education would be looking at policies to mirror what is being required by the...by this law and if, you know, this law, if this law passes exactly the way it is right now. And I think that...so that's how the school system would deal with it, is when a law comes into play, how does the school system abide by the law? If there is policies that need to be enacted, then those policies will be either created by the school system or by PLS, and that would be sent down. That's another way to do it. Does that somewhat answer your question?
It does. I just wanted folks to understand process. But right now, these are being discussed. They are not law, and once they become law, this is what the district follows, you know, to put policies and procedures in place to adhere to that law.
One thing that's very important, especially with House Bill 49, you can go to the North Carolina Legislature website, nclg.gov, and do Bill lookup. And when you do Bill lookup, there's actually a box that you can type in. If you typed in SB 49, that will give you an idea about the bill and where it is in committee, so I think it's very important for the public to know what's going on and what's being discussed. So that's one way to stay very engaged in this matter.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you, Mr. White. I want to back up for just a second. We do need, as a board, to look at a consensus to add the Mondo Track to the consent agenda for the February 13th business meeting. Are you guys okay with us doing that? Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move to 5.01, the School Boundary Realignment Study and Long Range Plan Presentation, and we'll have Mr. Tim Louder. Welcome, Mr. Louder.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, board members, and Dr. Kapiki, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to hopefully kick us off on a very important project for our school system here over the next six months, and that's the School Boundary and Realignment Study. Back in December, we sent out an RFQ asking for qualifications for firms that might be interested in helping us along this journey. On January 20th, we received five proposals. We distributed those five proposals to an internal committee, and each one of us read those proposals and scored them in accordance with the six major items you see here. And we did...once we scored those firms, we came up with the final two that we felt like would best represent the school system based upon their proposals. And tonight, and we're here to have those two presenters to come and speak to you, to present directly to you their proposal and how they would approach this project. Those two firms are Cooperative Strategies and MGT Davis Demographics. They've all been instructed to have 30 minutes for their presentation, upon which they have 15 minutes for questions. Of course, you can have much longer than that. You're the board, you can ask 30 minutes for questions if that's what you wish. That's what we allotted in our time, and one will...the first one to present will be Cooperative Strategies, and then I'll invite Davis Demographics in once this is over, okay? So if you have any questions, I'll be on this process so far. Okay. Again, let me explain the process. Once they have presented, then we will ask you to come back at your next board meeting and make a decision on which firm you feel best would represent us during moving forward on this project. And then we will, at that point in time, go and try to negotiate scope and price and contract and have it back to you at a very ambitious time of March so that we could vote on that and get started on this project, okay?
Thank you.
Quick question, Tim.
Yes.
What do we mean by long-range plan? It's not the 10-year plan, I'd say.
No, sir. This is just a long range, looking at the growth that's within the school system and how that would affect our boundaries in the future.
Students and schools?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions? And with that, I would like to invite to the podium Cooperative Strategies, Mr. Justin Rich and David Sturts. And Mr. Rich is going to be joining you virtually as he's home quarantining, I think, from a COVID situation, but with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Sturts and let him make the presentation.
Thank you, Tim.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapiki, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here. Again, my name is David Sturts, and the two-dimensional image that you'll see partially is Jim Rich for a minute. He does exist. He's a good guy. Work with him, but, you know, COVID is as COVID does. So we're going to keep this to under 30 minutes in the presentations best we can, spend some time in Q and A, just do some brief introductions of ourselves. So Justin's going to do the majority of the content in the middle of the presentation. I'll set us up and cue you the questions. So again, my name is David Sturts, Executive Director of Development with Cooperative Strategies. I've been with the firm for 10 years. We do strategic planning, demographic works for school districts exclusively around the... We do strategic planning, demographic works for school districts exclusively around the country. This is all we do in-house. We're not, we're not an architectural firm, we're not an engineering firm. We focus on demographics, we focus on planning. And we're a fairly small bunch of folks. We're a few dozen folks who focus exclusively in this space. We know it makes a difference. Our job is to create great plans for our districts so that you can focus on effective instruction and not have inefficiencies and distractions along the way. So that's, that's our, our MO. Personally, I've had the opportunity to work in North Carolina on several big strategic planning projects, Guilford County and their bond program, and planning and demographics. Our team did that behind the scenes, working as well. We've worked in demographics, doing projections, live and attend based for Charlotte Mecklenburg, various strategic plans, pre-architectural planning kind of work around the state and nationally. So Justin, if you can maybe introduce yourself a little bit in your service line, and then we'll go into the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Justin Rich. Thanks for this opportunity. And just sorry I can't be there in person, but really appreciate the accommodations that were made so that I can join virtually. I'm an Executive Director for Cooperative Strategies, and my career has involved various different aspects of school facility planning and funding for nearly 20 years now. Throughout my career, I've been involved in demographic analysis, including enrollment projections and attendance boundary analyses and processes. I've been involved in other demographic-related studies that really focus on using geographic information systems as a tool to analyze data and to make recommendations similar to what you all are planning to embark on. So thank you.
All right. And just a little bit more about our firm. So we are about 30, some odd folks, up to 50 we've had in the past. And what we work on is just this space. We've worked with over 2,000 districts in our history since the late 90s, about $15 billion in bonds and planning. And our, our focus in doing the work is to interconnect it with, with your actual planning work. So when we're doing demographic work, we're also looking at your planning needs because we do that for a living. And so it's, nothing's in a vacuum, nothing's in isolation. We do it all in-house, so we don't have to worry about third-party vendors and making that dance work. It is an in-house job for us, and we've been with the firm, Justin said 20 years before this, I ran a tutoring company, so been for 10 years. And we've all been in the education space for quite a period of time because we've seen it make a difference. So when we look at, for example, I just took clients that we've done from about, around 2010, maybe a little bit beforehand through currently, and then just looked at, based on National Council of Educational Statistics data, ran through what are some clients that are, kind of meet your profile in terms of your city, or is in the small-city designation, growing from rural over that 2010 to 2020 time. And, you know, we've had 140-some clients doing boundaries, demographics work that are, have, has had a similar growth rate as you and working in, in our mid-cities, or small cities, rather, across the country. You see all of those clients plotted there, the darker red or the higher growth rates. You've had a higher-than-average growth rate for our small-city clients. And we've seen some of our clients, which will, Justin will get into in a little bit, one of where I currently live grew from a town of 1K12 to 25 schools over a period of 30 years. We've done the boundaries and demographics for them and others, and that's, that is, that is a ride, we know, keeping up with the growth and changing the boundaries. So wanting to plan ahead with you on that and, and just having the understanding that we, we've worked with many clients in your search, in your circumstance. Looking back at your demographics here, again, enrollment has increased by, by about 13%. You've changed, you've actually moved into that small-city designation. Budget's increased, number of schools increased. And what we look at is benchmarking that, how are you keeping pace with that? What are the capacity needs, where you have pinch points, like portables at high school, for example, where you want to look to plan for in advance? And, and helping you do that for understanding best-of-capacity planning needs, financing, and we have all of that, that tool, those tools in-house. So I'm going to, now to kick it over to Justin, I'm going to stand off to the side. Justin's going to walk through our methodology for doing the demographics projections. He's going to walk through the methodology for doing the boundary work, go through a couple of case studies. I'll, I'll pepper in a few comments along the way, and then we'll take some questions and answers about how we might serve you all. So Justin, go ahead.
Thanks, David. So our methodology for enrollment projections is really the intersection of art and science. And the method that we use is the cohort survival method. It's a widely-accepted methodology used for K-12 enrollment projections. This methodology uses the direct inputs of historical live birth data and historical student enrollment to age a known population from grade to grade, year to year. The percentage of students who move from grade to grade and year to year are known as survival ratios, and we analyze those to determine a projection ratio, excuse me, ratio. And we apply that to current and future enrollment to develop a 10-year enrollment projection. That's by school, by grade. And so our, our methodology is called the STEP, S-T-E-P, Student Trends and Enrollment Projections. This was developed in collaboration with the Ohio State University and their Statistical Consulting Group. This program, it's, it's beneficial. It helps us to ensure consistency and quality control while also maintaining the statistical integrity for those statistics-minded folks. It uses the R software platform, which is common. I recall using that in my statistics classes. So the methodology is grounded in statistical distribution theory, and it inherently considers the net effects of historical trends in migration, housing, dropouts, transfers to and from charter and private schools, open enrollment policies, et cetera, et cetera. This methodology, however, does not assume changes in policies, program offerings, or future changes in housing and migration patterns. But to the extent that those things remain relatively constant, it does a really good job of projecting that. Next slide. So birth data is one of the, is one of the direct inputs that, that we use. This is really the science portion. We collect live birth counts collected from state health agencies. It's based on the mother's residence that's listed on the birth certificate. And we also collect 10 years of historical enrollment so that we can calculate those cohort survival factors. Our methodology for calculating cohort survival factors uses several different subsets or different increments of time. And we look at simple averages versus weighted averages. And we do that based on certain anomalies, and none being more, more so than the pandemic and the effect that that had on enrollment. So those are the types of things that we try to filter out when we prepare a recommended enrollment projection. We've included the total births for Cabarrus County on this slide, and it tells, unlike some of our other clients where we see just decreasing birth counts, it's really stabilized over the last several years. You had sort of a peak and then, but, but it's leveled off over the last several years. That will have a direct impact on, on enrollment going forward, as I'm sure you're all aware. Next slide. So blending the art with the science really results in the projection output that you'll see on this slide. So after plugging in historical enrollment data into our STEP software system, we analyze and develop projection ratios, which we then apply to current student data to develop those projections by school boundary. The statistical model uses the highest observations, those highest cohort survival ratios, and the lowest observations to develop these high and low projections. On this slide, you'll note that the historical enrollment from that COVID correction in school year 202021. So in cases like that, you'll see a higher range or a greater range between the high and the low projecting, projections. And that's just, you know, takes time for, for data to, to normalize. Next slide. Other data that we analyze as part of our enrollment projections, we purchase demographic data from the Environmental Systems Research Institute, or for those that are knowledgeable of GIS, it's called ESRI. They develop the, the software, software platform that we use, and they have a data partner, BIS, and we purchase data from them so that we can identify future population and demographic trends going on. Those look five years out into the future, and that's some of the analysis that, you know, we, we look at those trends, although it's not a direct input, that is more of the qualitative data that we, that we use just to, you know, serve as a logic check for, for our projections. We analyze historical data, such as the number of building permits by unit type, and we also prepare a live-attend analysis. And this is an important comparison that shows where students live within the district where, versus where they attend school. This is helpful for understanding student migration patterns, students that, you know, when there's more open enrollment policies, you know, where students are choosing to attend versus where they live. Next slide. So as a separate study that we prepare and, and given the amount of historical development and, you know, planned future development that's happening in Cabarrus County, we, we prepare a number of different housing analyses. We're going to share with you just a little bit about a student potential analysis, and this is our most comprehensive analysis based on housing. So our housing studies use a student yield methodology to forecast enrollment. Student yield is the ratio of students per housing unit. We collect geographic and municipal data and then geocode or identify on a map precisely where those students live so that we know right where they reside. And that allows us to be able to calculate those yield factors. Then using those yield factors, we identify the student yields by the age of home, creating a model that helps us to forecast enrollment. When we look at the age of a home, what we see and, and what this example here shows is that there's a period of time where, in the early years, student yields are lower than, they tend to be several years out when you reach maximum yields for, for those homes. And then over time, they, as the population ages, those student yields tend to drop. We apply those yields based on the age of homes to active and planned housing developments based on their anticipated timelines. And this allows us to show when a development is going to have an impact on enrollment and how that will change over time. We also identify vacant and developable land within the district as part of a land analysis or build-out study. Next slide. On this slide, we've included an example of the yield model that we use. Like I was mentioning, over time, that, those student yields tend to change, and they reach sort of a peak in somewhere between years seven and 12. Again, that's based on most, our, our most common experience, but then that tends to drop over time. So we apply this model to all single-family and multifamily housing that is planned within the district. And I would just note that for the multifamily units, because those units tend to have higher turnover, we apply a static yield to those. Next slide. So for existing housing, we map out every single existing subdivision and residential complex within a district, within the county, and provide relevant, relevant information, including the attendance boundaries, the average age of homes, the, the average assessed value of those homes, the number of units, the number of students that are being generated by subdivision, and the overall K through 12 yield for every subdivision or residential complex. Next slide. We repeat that exercise for planned and developing housing, and we include the maximum amount of enrollment and what that will end up being when the housing stock, what, what we refer to as being mature, once, you know, it's sort of gone through that, that yield cycle. The maximum enrollment occurs when the majority of the units are realizing their highest yields, again, typically seven to 12 years after they were built. And then mature enrollment occurs when the yields sort of have settled and stabilized or become less volatile. In many districts, this typically, typically occurs around year 25 or 30 of the yield model. And taking that yield model, we apply that to each development like we do with the existing, the, the existing housing. And we work with the developers and municipalities involved to try and determine when might new construction happen so that we can incorporate that information into our yield model to, to try to identify those peaks and the levels of growth that we could expect over time. I'm going to pause there for a sec just because these particular examples, like David said, this is where he lives, and he can speak a little bit to the, the changes that have happened in Olentangue School District.
Right. So this, this was back in, in the, like, 1990, we're talking 1K12 building. And then became one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation and the fastest in the state for years. So now over 20,000 kids, 25 buildings. And this was, a lot of the, the work, we started with them before social media, so that was in simpler time. But since then, in doing the kind of boundary work, you know, what's helped in, in doing this work is to, to have it aligned with the sort of the capital planning. So the district and growing in this kind of pace, that the, the community is aware of the strategy for keeping up with that needed capacity? What's the building strategy? What kind of elementary schools, middle schools, high schools? How do we build them? Where do we build them, generally speaking? What's the logic that goes into them, size-wise, location-wise, so forth? That's all planned out in the open. And that's planned ahead with the housing and the growth so that there's not surprises and we have to reinvent the wheel on the where, the how, the when, the what on the capital side to try to be more efficient that way. And allow the, the district to focus on the primary task of that qualities of education every day, every kid, everywhere. Because what we ultimately want to be at is conversations with parents about this is a district of choice more than I moved here for that school. And into the degree that we can support the ability for the district to focus on that every-day, every-kid operations, and let's just plan ahead on the demographics and capital, make that a cohesive, coherent plan together so that you can really just get on with that plan and focus at the, at the task at hand. That, the lived experience of doing this to scale is sort of our, our, our through-line, our rudder when we think about how to, how to guide the process. Justin?
So on this next slide, we naturally, as part of the proposal process and in conversations with Tim, when we realized that there's a number of schools that have been constructed over the last number of years, clearly there, there must be a substantial amount of development. So we wanted to look a little bit further into that. And this chart shows the single-family homes constructed within Cabarrus County going back to 2012. Those are shown in gray. And the green shade there, that shows the multifamily units that were constructed over that period of time. It's clear from folks that live in this, like David and I, that new residential development has had a significant impact. We would expect that that would continue into the future as well. And David talked about some of the implications from a school planning perspective. I won't spend too much more time talking about this because I think that you all probably get the gist of our analysis. But another thing that is important is there's plenty of vacant land that could have a potential impact on schools in the future, and we don't want to discount that. We want to be looking ahead beyond just sort of the near-term development pipeline, those, those units that are currently approved and building, or those that are applying for tentative track map status. And so looking to land analysis, looking to those parcels of land that currently may be a little bit too far away from, from the utilities, from water and sewer and things like that. But once those utilities are connected to a more cost-effective place where, where developers are then able to entitle that land and then build on that land. where developers are then able to entitle that land and then build on that land. This land analysis really goes into that. Um, and although we, we won't have, uh, hard and fast inform, information, we can look at the acreage, we can look at the relative densities to other projects that are nearby and figure out how many students might you expect to see from that. So that's another component to these, uh, studies that we do. Next slide. So this, this chart here shows the outcome of our student potential forecast, which really shows how enrollment might change over time based on that yield model. Yield model, it takes all of that information, all of that, um, information about future units and potential future units. And then, um, puts that into a model that the output is sort of the peak student enrollment. I really think this is a valuable tool for making some of the big picture strategic decisions. Uh, schools are expensive to build, so you don't want to overbuild when you don't need to. You want to make sure that if there's particular areas that are going to have a lot more enrollment density, that you have the right number of school facilities located. So this is a great, uh, counterpoint in my mind to be able to, again, make those, uh, key strategic decisions and putting your facility dollars where they should be prioritized and not being in the kind of situation where you overbuild and then have to, uh, down the road potentially close schools at least unnecessarily. So this really is a helpful tool for that. Next slide. Quickly, I'm going to talk about a capacity study and why that's so important here. And from, um, from a boundary perspective, it's, it's crucial because it involves knowing what space is available and where some districts have a better handle on this than others. But our process for conducting a study like this and collude includes collecting site data, uh, conducting onsite assessments and interviewing site staff just so that we can understand how the facilities and the spaces are being utilized. We found that this process is effective to, to try and focus in on a true capacity number because this really is not a simple exercise for those that have gone through the process before. Next slide. And the reason it's not is because when we're calculating capacity, oftentimes there's the design capacity and that assumes that every single classroom is going to have students in it. And we apply a loading standard or an estimate of the number of students that would be in each one of those classrooms. But that doesn't really take into account the actual utilization at the site where, um, you know, there's certain classrooms need to be used as resource rooms or other specialty classrooms in order to run the curriculum that's necessary. And so there's also, there's also classrooms that may be used as teaching spaces, but perhaps there's lower numbers of students in there. A perfect example is special education. So what you see here is that illustration shows that there's a big difference between design capacity versus program capacity. Um, and so that's an important aspect, obviously, knowing, uh, when we're looking at boundaries, how full should a given school be based on the true capacity or the program capacity, uh, that is being assumed? Next slide. Now to shift gears to attendance boundary analysis, uh, to prepare for a boundary analysis, we rely on a data, data driven approach. And this is a topic that can be very emotional. Uh, and so we really focus on using data to be able to inform our approach. We compile information like projected enrollment, like we talked about facility utilization, uh, demographic information that may be relevant to boundaries such as free and reduced lunch status, uh, or other demographic information, uh, based on board policy or, uh, you know, the, what, what the community is asking for. We look at things like school level feeder patterns and the travel times for students to their school facility and how those are affected by, uh, proposed or potential boundary changes. Next slide. And ultimately what we're looking to do just in terms of recommendations is to, in those situations where there's low utilization, what are the options that the district may consider? Might there be some programmatic changes that could be made? Are there, uh, you know, perhaps consolidating schools? Uh, that's much less likely to be the case, I'm sure in a growing community like yours, but, uh, that's on the low side of the spectrum there. Um, when a school is being optimally utilized, that's a situation where, um, oftentimes we try to avoid making changes when they're not necessarily, if, if they're being utilized at the sort of optimal level, um, we might call that a pass through where we're not, uh, going to make any changes there because it's serving the student population that it should. Uh, and then in those situations where there's high utilization, uh, considering a boundary adjustment in order to, uh, decrease enrollment at those sites, uh, perhaps that includes building new schools like I'm sure you all are anticipating. Um, and you know, there are other programmatic solutions that, that may be available, um, or temporary additions and things of that nature. Next slide. So we thought it would be useful to discuss a recent project sort of as a case study to demonstrate our process and how that may be relevant for you all. Howard County Public School System, it's a suburban school system in Maryland. It's located roughly between Baltimore and Washington DC. And, uh, the district is currently constructing its 13th high school. And so they brought us in to help facilitate the process, both in terms of data analysis, but also to help with the community engagement portion of this. So there were a number of different criteria that were considered, some that were in board policy that were, were expressly laid out, but there's also some that arose from board members and community members. Uh, they wanted us to look at different, um, aspects of what a potential boundary change might do. There was a lot of outreach that was conducted to the community, uh, to make sure that the board was, uh, you know, really apprised of community sentiment and just making sure that, uh, we had a chance to explain what the boundaries would do, how it impacts, uh, each family that might be impacted by it and just to gather, uh, feedback from them, from them. And that was really useful for this process. And I think the community was much, um, not everyone was happy, but we, we heard a lot of positive things as well. Next slide. So to the community engagement component, um, I'll just kind of summarize this, this process involved seven different community meetings that we attended, including a Spanish language only meeting. Uh, we conducted 24 focus groups and there's about five people in each one of those groups, uh, trying to get some direct feedback from folks and giving them space to be able to ask questions and talk candidly. Um, and there, there was numerous public hearings. Each, each time there was a new, uh, boundary scenario that was being proposed, there were public hearings to get feedback on those scenarios. Um, the, the central hub for the process was the district's redistricting website, which was quite comprehensive. It had, uh, data presentations and, you know, uh, provided them with opportunities to be able to weigh in. Um, one such way is through community surveys and that was a valuable tool to be able to reach community members that may not be able to, or they may not want to attend in-person meetings. And, uh, you know, just kind of taking a step back, the feedback that we heard from Howard County and what we've heard in other processes of what, as, as well, is that our community engagement process allowed for a broader section of the community to be heard. And I think it put the board in a situation where they felt like they had heard from all different, uh, groups and, and stakeholders throughout the district and felt, uh, again, while it wasn't an easy decision to, to come up with the final boundary scenario, they, they didn't feel like they were being blindsided or they hadn't looked at a particular issue. And, uh, I think that was productive for them. Next slide. Like I said, we did a lot of comparative analysis during this process. Um, on this slide, I'm focusing a little bit more on the facility related, uh, considerations. We looked at school level feeder patterns, meaning the district didn't want to create small groups of middle school students, for instance, that attended a given high school that was different than what the majority of their classmates were. We call that a small feed. Um, and in fact, there's a board policy in Howard County related to this, um, where they didn't want to create situations where less than 15% of a given middle school was then going on to a different high school than the majority of their classmates. We looked at classroom utilization, just ensuring that there's sufficient space for the projected enrollment at each site. Uh, and we also looked at travel times to schools. We modeled the average travel times for students to understand how that would differ based on the existing boundaries versus, uh, any of the proposed scenarios that we provided. Next slide. We also analyzed student demographic information, comparing the existing demographic makeup to the proposed boundary scenarios. Of particular focus was the socioeconomic breakdown of each school or in Maryland, what they called the direct certification percentage where, um, the, the school district is able to directly certify their free and reduced lunch status. Once again, the board has a policy, uh, that looks at the percentages of free and reduced lunch status or direct certification. And what we were looking at is, were we creating boundary scenarios where it, um, where it caused one of the boundaries to, um, either be, uh, less or more, um, concentrations of free and reduced lunch status students, um, and just would, would compare those two averages that we saw across the district. Um, again, we were looking for those situations where a boundary scenario might have the unintended consequences, um, of, of creating these sorts of pockets, um, of, of lower socioeconomics. And so that was an important consideration, uh, and something that we referred to. Some of the other demographic considerations, we're looking at things like the racial and ethnic composition, um, and also the English language learner, um, concentrations at given sites. Next slide. So just to highlight, uh, sort of the overall big picture from our experience in Howard County, this was a very deliberate process. It utilized exhaustive data analysis and it really included a very telegraphed community engagement, uh, process and, and laid that out for the community to understand the decision making process. What was somewhat unique and, um, we don't see this in every, uh, boundary scenario in every boundary engagement that we're involved in, um, but it's becoming more and more the case, I think, is that this didn't just focus on high school boundaries, even though that was the prime mover for this. It ended up really touching each school level because of those feeder splits that I was talking about. So just by function of creating an additional boundary, that's going to have implications for, uh, for the feeder patterns for the lower school levels. So there were small changes that were made at the middle school level and at the elementary school level as well. So another thing that I think was unique about this, this process was in order to get these boundaries approved, it was largely dictated not only by board policy, but also by state law. And that required a lot of advanced planning and coordination, uh, so that we met relevant deadlines. And I'm sure as you all, uh, have experienced, it's, it's not like you, um, establish the boundaries and then open the school the next day. There's a lot of planning that goes into constructing new schools and then getting those ready and the outreach to, uh, to students and parents to, to let them know about their new school. And so needless to say, it required a lot of lead time and again, just sort of close coordination to, to meet those deadlines. And then finally, since Howard County is a growing area, it was really important that we aligned with the district's capital plan to sort of piggyback on what David talked about earlier. Um, there's planned facility expansions and future schools that they were contemplating. So when we were looking at boundary scenarios, we really had to think about, okay, uh, if, if there's an expansion at a given school, how is that going to affect utilization? And are, are we talking about just a short period of time where that school is going to be overcrowded or, well, all of those different sorts of factors and, and, and keeping that big picture in mind. Um, so I think that was another, just the final sort of unique, uh, situation that we, we encountered, but, uh, overall really had a positive experience during, during that process. So I think that's the end of our presentation. David, I'll turn it back over to you.
Sure. And just to wrap up and get into questions here, I just, um, if we don't have to, if I don't have the chance to say it at the end, we really enjoy this work. We enjoy getting geeking out on the details and getting into, uh, the, the secondary implications, tertiary implications of the kind of planning, the boundaries and the enrollment and the capital. This is our world. Uh, this is what we do. We've been doing it for a long time. We know it can make a positive difference, uh, when we get it right and allow you to focus on your core competencies and your core business day to day and not have these, uh, and not have too many distractions, you're going to have them, but try to minimize that as much as possible. So we really, when we do select a project to pursue, we are all in on it. Uh, and that is my commitment, that is our company's commitment. So if you do select us, we are all in, uh, we're going to, uh, put, uh, put everything we have into getting it right, uh, like we do every time. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain questions.
So board members, I'm going to start, Mr. Tredaway, with you and work our way down. And Ms. Sandich, I'll let you be last.
So early on, you said that your company does demographics and planning.
Yes, sir.
Tell me what you mean by planning.
Sure. Uh, good question. So everything from pre-bond to pre-architectural, uh, to some, you know, more general strategic planning. So for example, um, here in North Carolina, uh, did working on the, the Gophers County facilities master plan, uh, led that process. And then, um, our partner who does the demographics lead for us, Anne Hopsis, uh, she, she led the demographic, uh, planning for that, that, the projections that we did. We did the live base projections for them. I did the facilities master plans, looking at where would you need us to build, rebuild, uh, adjust, uh, your, your portfolio of schools in time and capital plan in that sense. To Winston-Salem, working with, uh, on a strategic plan about, uh, the selection of their choice program in time, was the sustainable choice program portfolio, given their population, given the programs that they had in operations, what could they sustain at a quality level? So anything in, in the, we say the capital and operating, uh, strategic planning sense that's rooted in demographic, financial, uh, building data, that's our world.
Okay. So build out potential would be in there.
Oh, yes, sir.
The housing pipeline, all that. So, um, tell me how you, uh, you, you had seating capacity and you had program capacity. I know the term we historically have used here is core capacity, where there's common spaces. Where does that fit?
Uh, that's at the center because, uh, that is what I, what I've seen in the planning world is that is, and that's often a soft target for anybody who doesn't like the outcome is your capacity is wrong because I say that the, there's, there's the planning, there's the design capacity, there's the program capacity. Right. There's also a square footage based capacity. You could have a program capacity for 25 and your classroom could be 750 square feet and that classroom could be a thousand square feet. It could have the same program capacity, but it has less square foot per kit. We tend to think that you need to be anywhere from 36 to 37 and a half square foot per kid in average to be able to do the kind of multi-disciplinary instruction and different teaching methods that we want to support today. So we look at that side. But the fourth side is emotional capacity. And that's when somebody walks in and sees the hallways full or, you know, my kid says, you know, that there's, they didn't have a desk today. Right. So that, that sense of, ah, you know, we're, we're too full. And so what we try to do is slice and dice the capacity, um, by design and crosswalk the original all-in capacity and design, crosswalk it down to what's actionable for you.
Okay. And then lastly, um, is there, is there a money back guarantee on the longevity of the plan?
I might need to talk to my insurer about that. I appreciate the question.
Seriously, you understand my intent. It's like, yeah, at the end of the day, is there going to be some assurance that we're not going to have to do this next year, you know?
If it's any reassurance, uh, when we finish a very similar plan for a, uh, Illinois district, um, my final board presentation, my last recommendation was that they don't do this again very often. Um, as after we'd gone through, we'd stress test their whole system. It's like, no, you, this, we've stress tested, we've looked at it at every angle. We've hit thousands of people in the community over and over again. Uh, this plan should stick and data says that the people said it, let's, let's just leave it, leave it be. What we recommend in looking at any kind of, of a strategic plan built around your demographics and it with capital implication. and with capital implications, which they almost always do, is to do a 10-year projection, to do your cap, your housing studies and yields, to plan your capital side around your five-year, because that's your highest level of accuracy, because of, you actually have birth data to ping off of. And then update that projection annually, particularly for dynamic districts like yourself. And what we can say with assurance is that when you do that, your capital plan, when you have those different azimuths out there, the 5, 10, and the long-term yields, that we can craft the, the study in the direction that you were headed demographically, knowing that, and, and make sure that those first five-year investments, you know, on the capital side, aren't misaligned from the long-term demographic trend. It's, it's nudging everything in that direction, and it takes time. But that's the recommendation. Annual projections of your five and 10-year, do your capital planning every five years along the way.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Fur.
Thank you for your presentation. It was really in-depth and, and I had the same concerns as Mr. Tredaway had, had the same question pretty much. You know, we've had to do this numerous times, and we would like to finally get it right. And so we're going to put a lot of pressure to make sure that hopefully we don't have to go through this any, in the next good while. So thank you very much.
Understood.
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, somehow I see, see you can't really avoid that every time you open a school. You're going to have to pick these kids from somewhere and can very well mess with the good work that has been done for, for redistricting plan. And I do see that, you know, there's a lot of information here. I see how, you know, you trade off different things to make decisions from here. There's, the one example you've shown is not contiguous, contiguous boundaries, and there's some satellite redistricting in there. And that all needs, you know, there's a balance of all that to play out based on what the priorities are. I see that. When you do your, are you going to present the board with alternatives or is it going to be one recommendation? How does the board involve in this process?
Great question. So our, in any kind of planning process we do, there's, there's three phases. There's the data analysis and framing. So we're going to get all the data dump, and we're going to do all of our data. We're going to look at the live, attend. We're going to look at your historical enrollments and housing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Then, you know, what are the priorities as, as known from internal stakeholders and external to however we scope that? We're going to come to you first, first of all with, here's our process of what we're going to do. Then we're going to come to you and show you the data and analyses and what, what we think those implications are for creating options. We're then going to work on creating options, and that's the feedback loop that we're going to get with internally and externally with your stakeholders here. On, on, here's what are the priorities for options development? Here are some options to develop. Even in some cases, we actually have folks working with the constraints and tools that we have to say, here are your constraints, here's your inputs. You make some, you make some maps. But here's the rules. It's a, it's a game it in a way, right? And then we create, we have those options, we vet those options, we come back to you. Here was your feedback on the data and framing it for developing the options. Here's the options that we have. We're going to come back to you at that point, getting your option, your feedback on the options. And then we come back and the recommendations. Because the question behind your question is, one thing that is absolutely imperative is that we have constant communication. This is an iterative process. Nobody gets it right the first time in a, in a, in a room somewhere and then just gives you the magic plan, absent other people's feedback. It, it does need to, to build in time to, to be informed by different feedback over time and to evolve as it goes throughout the process.
Ultimately, we've got to get four of us to vote for the, vote for the plan, and it's got to make sense to our public as well, so.
Correct.
Yeah, I do like the fact that you've got, your recommendation slide has a little, sometimes out of the box thinking on what else can you do besides necessarily moving, moving kids from one school to another. I like that. I do like, you're going out and maybe show us, or you could show us what's, what sites may be available in the future for that. Future planning would be helpful. And then I guess my last question had to do with housing projections, and here we have some unique issues with the sewer. That's kind of slowed things down a little. How is that incorporated into your model?
That's, you know, looking at timing of developments, how does that, how has that impacted timing in the past? What's the best knowledge intel that we have on that prognosis moving forward?
It's a current, current issue, so.
Yeah. Okay. And so with that, it's a timing matter. Ultimately, it comes down to time. You know, you look at all the potentially developable land, what is immediately has the highest likelihood of development, what's already in the pipeline, what's probable, what are the constraints and confounding elements that could slow this stuff down, could slow development down? And in, in part of that, we like to have a bright line between the enrollment projections and the housing. We do not try to conflate the two. There are different methodologies and different outcomes, and I talk about them as binoculars. You need to see out of both eyes to see where you're going on this and not, not try to, to weave the two together. Because then you're going to be making hypotheses about timing on developments and baking that into the math of your projections, which is risky business. And you're really, you're, what, whatever has been impacting enrollment, we can see that in the cohort survival changes over time. And that's how we have the highest accuracy in the projections moving forward.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
I was just going to add in, if I can just piggyback on that. Having been in this role and doing similar functions through the Great Recession and seeing what happened to housing developments and all the uncertainty and what we have with interest rates and all those sorts of things, it certainly is a challenge. Looking at things like housing affordability and how prices change over time, that directly impacts whether or not, you know, land that could be entitled and could be developed, whether or not it's economically viable for those developers. So there's a lot of moving targets. I think what we rely on is a lot of communication and, you know, thinking back on our past experiences and kind of bringing all of that together when we are preparing housing studies to come up with the best estimate of when those, when those projects are likely to build and going beyond that to look at vacant, developable, developable land, to see what's most likely to enter the pipeline next. And one of the maps that we showed you mapped out all of the sewer capacity that was, again, in David's home district of Volentangie. And look, and using that as a reference point to figure out who's likely to entitle next and then what point in the development cycle do they end up. So it's, it's not, it's not a perfect science because we have so many different factors that can impact it. But what we pride ourselves on is bringing more information and more experience to those sorts of situations to try and come up with projections and studies that really reflect that deep knowledge.
Ms. Escobar.
Hi. I'm excited to hear that you're going to geek out about numbers because we have a, I think, a unique county in the sense that it's growing real, real fast. And a lot of people aren't being, we're, we're, we're planning for kids who aren't being, who aren't being born here. So a lot of people are moving in right before kindergarten. And so I, you have a quantitative and you have a qualitative analysis. How do you adjust knowing that there are a lot of people who are being born in Charlotte right now, who are looking to cross over the line in five years? So how do you take that in?
Layered question. One, the growth, I've yet to work with a district, we've yet to work with a district where the growth is even. So that's the first thing to know is that, you know, in, in looking at your county's growth, it's going to have, it's, it has its, its different degrees in different areas. So everything's local. So we'll start, start with there. And then in looking at the, as Justin was talking about, the cohort survival methodology, you know, the, one of the beauties of that strategy is it doesn't rely on us knowing what all of the particular inputs have been, have affected your enrollment. It's more of a phenomenological approach. What has impacted you, to what degree, when?
Got it.
Right? And so we look at those and we, if, when we see changes, spikes or dips in a survival ratio, goes from 97.8 to 101.2 in a year, and then it goes to 102.1, then 102.7, okay? That's, that's telling us that you're, you're a magnet. You're getting kids who aren't born here, who weren't originally, like something's happening here and the opposite tells us something else. And that's part of that dialogue. Okay, this is what we see in the data. We see this blip, we see this change in direction. What might be causing this? What qualitatively, district, do you think might explain what we're seeing in the quantitative analyses here? We look at housing and what, what are all the different pieces that, and that's part of the dialogue? We don't just try to come divine it on our own, but we have to dialogue with you to, to bring what we're seeing to you and have that discussion. Because ultimately, what the impact then is, is based upon the outcomes of the discussion. As Justin said, that's the art side. It's the art and the science where we take and say, okay, well, this survival ratio, we're going to put the gas on this one a little bit more. Because we see this trend line in discussion with the district, we think this is not a blip, but a trend.
Right.
Right? And so we can accentuate this more in the projection, but the beauty is still, it's based upon what has actually happening, happened rather, rather than hypothesizing inputs that would have a direct impact on your change, which increases your chance for error.
So looking at Howard County, when you did that, who has the decision-making power as far as capital investments in Howard County?
That's the county, the county school system. Justin, that's, I'm not saying anything correct, because Justin worked on that directly, I did not. But that one, the county, it's a county school system in Maryland.
That's right. Yeah, just like. Yeah. And you're, you're right. The county weighs in on those decisions and, and funding decisions. And ultimately, there are state funds as well. They have to meet certain criteria in order to fund some of those capital projects. That's sort of the, the decision-making flow there.
Well, I'm just saying, because we don't have that authority.
Oh, I don't.
Okay. All right. So you're.
My clients, I work a lot in Virginia and North Carolina as well, where you don't have that authority. And so, for example, in, in your neighbors, a little bit north in Guilford, when working through their 2019 master plan, as we worked through that, then a lot of engagement in stakeholders and with, including with the county level to jointly, jointly communicate the need.
Yeah.
And that's where the, the heavy details on the data come in. Because we're not guessing here when we're coming up with these plans. It's, it's, has very defensible, airtight bases to this that has been reproduced elsewhere. And we walk through with the powers that be in the, in the county. This is, this is where the ship is headed in terms of enrollment. And so the question isn't, is this happening? It's how we're going to deal with it.
Yep.
And we can, here's the current trajectory of funding, for example, relative to your deferred maintenance and, and other items and capacity. And here's how that's leaving us as we project into the future. And here is the challenges with the status quo in this respect. Here's a, a plan that, that addresses all of that and, and does so in a stage gated, stage gated way. That's, that's, that aligns your capital in your, in your demographics. And the conversation continues.
Well, that, no, that's good to hear. And we have a great relationship with our county, but at the same time, ultimately, they're going to be the ones that have to sign off on what we think about. So I just want to make sure that you have that, you're used to that. And you said exactly what I needed to hear.
Yes, ma'am.
And then as far as community engagement, I'm, I'm thankful to see that, because I'm like writing down questions as we go, and then your next slide is answering those questions. So I appreciate that. What does it look like? You do a community meeting, I'm going to go to a high school. Who's running it? Who's there? Who from our, our side is there? What do you, how does it run? How do you deal with?
The tomatoes?
Yeah. Yeah. Or anything like that.
Yeah. So our, with the way we run the meetings, first of all, we don't do open mic night meetings where it's, it's come and you have your five minutes of venting. Because they're just not productive and they don't, they don't provide an equal voice to folks. They disproportionately give voice to a select few. What we do, and we have the open meetings like that, we, first of all, there's a variety. Focus groups, Justin was talking about, 24 focus groups of five, right? You identify target groups, who's probably impacted. Once we create options, you need to have focus groups with the likely impacted. Because a come-one, come-all, where people are talking about somebody else's business is not, is, you need a come-one, come-all, but you also need the focus groups. When we do the come-on's, come-all, we're facilitating it. And we, you know, you can introduce, but we, we facilitate it and we do a presentation of about 20 to 30 minutes. Here's the data that's developed, the first round of meetings. Here's the data that's developed. Here's what we think it probably means. Work in some groups, small groups, and, and answer these, these questions as a unit. Can you answer these questions and come to consensus as a small group? And then we can report out. This way, the, there's dialogue, everybody has dialogue in small groups about the data, trying to come to consensus. And we have some good qualitative data, but what happens when your community comes together and it tries to come to consensus on some key data-driven questions and needs? We use that, that information to develop options, to refine ideas and come back to the community with those refined ideas and have, repeat the process. Here's the options. We walk through their genesis, how they've evolved, why they exist, the data, what was considered but ultimately not proceeded because it didn't pass muster for whatever reason. Here are some options. Sit down, can you come to consensus on support levels for these different options? Why or why not? And then that conversation gives us great data. Meanwhile, you blanket the community and survey data to try to get that more, volume of feedback while having focus groups as needed with impacted communities and between the different methodology. It's an all-in effort. But when you do that, you come back with a high degree of confidence that the feedback that you're getting is not, well, it's, it's not disproportionate, it's proportional, it's, it's, it's listened to the voices. We've gone out to the people where they are. We've held the large meetings, we've sent the surveys, and we've done it more than once, and we've done it in a logical sequence to help have them help inform the plan's development and refinement.
And last question. Will we see you and David, or you're David and he's Justin, are you guys the one running this? When you say we, what, you say you have two dozen people working for you. Do we get our own team? What does that team look like? And who's dedicated to Gabarus County?
So I, so we're actually about 40. The 2,000 is the number of projections. We've done a lot. So sorry if I misspoke in that. We're, we're a smaller firm. And so Justin is really working on the boundary side, leading those efforts. And so, and then we have team members that support that. But Justin's leading the, the boundary analyses and boundary planning. I lead and support on our facilities master planning and capital side in the intersection of those things with the demographic data. Ann Hopsis, who's, whose day job is COO and, and by night, she's our demographic specialist. She's the one who's done thousands of these projections. She's leading the actual team that does the projections, but we have folks that support her. You'll, you'll see all of us at different parts. Part of my role is to help stitch it together into, you know, what are all the different plans that need to come together and be cohesive so that at the end you have a one plan, not a Franken plan, that's kind of cobbled together. And, and then we would be your top three folks. And then you have other folks who will be working, senior directors on it, who have a lot of experience in this work as well. But you're, we're not going to be strangers in this. Yeah.
Ms. Sandage, did you have any questions?
Sure. Thanks for the presentation and for applying. So my questions are pretty unconventional, so please excuse me in the beginning for them. My first question is, can you talk to me about, or talk to us about one of your most challenging experiences during this type of process and how you worked through it?
Oh, good one. Justin, do you want to chime? I'll start. Do you want to chime in on one?
Sure.
All right. So I'll pick one that's fresh. And it's a district in another state. And in, I'll tell the end first. We were selected to, because we did a master plan for them, Facilities Master Plan, seven, eight years ago. We're selected because their elementary school process was all choice. There was no boundaries for elementary schools. And they had, I think it's 11 of them. And they wanted to look at options to create boundaries. That was the cry they were hearing from some of the community. So we went in and for a year's time, we developed options. Here's how you would make that work. Well, truth is, you couldn't well. Well, truth is, you couldn't well. Because for this particular district, they had, for example, seven elementary schools within two miles of each other, and the population scattered around. So, to do that, to create boundaries, you have to create this hodgepodge of connect, of disconnected boundary islands to make it work, unless you draw these spaghetti-strapped lines all over the place, and that's just, it won't work. And we did, we surveyed everybody in the district. We had dozens and dozens and dozens of community engagement meetings and focus groups and so forth. And what was challenging and rewarding at the same time was that the board was hearing this voice, we've got to change. This isn't right. This isn't working. Choice isn't working. But when we got everybody's input, the answer was, it's the working the best we got. And the alternatives were untenable. And what people really wanted from folks that normally don't break bread together were in lockstep agreement on the fact that actually, what we need to do is strengthen the system that you have and get on with the business of focusing on the quality schooling environment for every kid every day. That the community itself was seeing the hubbub caused. And there was some drama as a distraction from the core focus of the district. And, and wanting to get back to that. And so, the, the small voices that stirred for a big change ultimately brought, went through the whole community, through a lot of angst, if you will, but at the end was, we stress tested the system. It works. And now, we need to focus on, on what's most important. So, that was challenging in process, not where we thought we would end up, is coming back to where we started in that particular case. But the, the value in that was, the way we did it, we were able to come back and show the board that, given the data, given the options, given the feedback, the voices that I heard were not representative. And in fact, this is the best path moving forward. And it passed 7-0. Your turn.
Yeah, thanks. You know, what, what comes to mind for me is a district that, this was earlier in my career, and it was a situation where they tried to do a little too much. And this particular district wanted to close a couple of schools. And that, I think, was probably, you know, now in hindsight, the biggest red flag. They wanted to close a couple of elementary schools because they had really small schools that were, you know, in some cases, about 200 students. And just from an educational standpoint, they couldn't run the types of programs that they wanted to. But there were a lot of other criteria, and it made sense, I think, at the outset to consider these different things. But at the end of the day, just were not as relevant, you know? The amount of, the amount of capital expenditures that were going to be required in order to bring those certain schools up, or the amount of savings you might incur by closing one school versus another. And again, my, my observation is that they were trying to do too much and connect that to a boundary scenario. And what we faced in that particular situation, and I think was, was one of the important lessons, was that, to what David talked about earlier, we heard from a lot of different people in the community, but the people that we heard most often from and most loudly from were a same, the same group, a small group of people. And this was before online surveys and before we had the ability to conduct focus groups and to do a lot of, you know, to incorporate a lot of the tools that we use now. And so, I think that although the district did end up closing schools and did have to adjust their boundaries, I think that if that was repeated today, it would be done in a different way, in a more fruitful, constructive way. And I would just make an observation that when you're looking at that sort of situation, when there's a couple of different policy decisions, those policy decisions need to be made separately. First, there's an identification of a school to close. And then, the boundaries are a separate issue and are a trailing issue that needs to be addressed. So, that's, that's my war story, I would say.
Thank you both for answering that. My other question is, who, in your opinion, do you consider as your consumer or customer?
There's the, you know, practically, we work for your superintendent and your school district. Philosophically, we work for the students. And that's not just smoke. We're in this business for a long time, many of us, for a good reason. We really do believe it. We've seen it impact kids in a good way, when we get it right. And so, our, we state it in our mission, in our company, that, you know, we're, we envision a day where this education is thriving for everyone. That is our focus. And we do it, we do it every day.
Okay. Ms. Sandage, is that the last question?
Yeah, well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Louder?
Thank you. That was very engaging. I appreciate you all taking that time. Our next firm would be presented to you tonight is MGT Davis Demographics. We have Mr. Lauren Woods and Diana Gold, I always want to say Lauren Green. I'm old enough, yes, I can remember Bonanza. So, I'll certainly underline his name to make sure I, I got it right. Mr. Lauren Woods and Mrs. Diana Goldstein. And they were just coming in just a moment. I think Brian went down, too. Let them come in and hopefully get started with you. I hope their presentation is just as engaging.
Good evening. It's so quiet in here. What did you guys do?
[laughing].
Oh, perfect. Well, I have, yeah, I have a...
Oh, is mine on?
You're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I always say I have the coach's voice. Someone at the last board meeting, I had to move the microphone in front of me because I was turning and talking. Everybody can hear me in the whole auditorium, except the people online. Well, good evening. Beautiful day out. I was happy to be out here after last week's ice storm event in Texas. I'm Lauren Woods. This is, this is Diane Goldstein.
Hi.
We're here on behalf of MGT to present our, our proposal or do our presentation. We already have a proposal. We'll talk about MGT Davis, the production team, qualifications, our approach, and why Davis and MGT merged earlier this year. Part of that, we just, well, I'll tell you, part of it is, we've been working in the same realm for the past 30 years. A lot of times, I would be in a board presentation on a January or February, giving the, giving the forecasts for the, for the year or what have you. And then, about 15 minutes later, somebody else would come up to lectern and give another presentation about finance or diversity studies or something like that. And, oh, that's cool. And I'd walk off and down the road motors, right? Well, now, when we give these presentation stuff, normally, I'll be here, followed by another colleague, because now, we're working in, in line with certain objectives for the So, that being said, keep in mind, Davis has been around for over 30 years. This is our 30th anniversary of being incorporated. We work with well over 400 school districts in North America. Yes, in Canada also. Software is on top of our platform. We use GIS to help understand and utilize spatial analytics for the studies, for rezoning, everything that you could think of, we can look at spatially. Keep in mind, when you're looking at the group, there's other tools that we can reach into our tool belt to help in the process. If something comes up along the way that may not be part of the original discussions, we can figure out how we can add something or fix something along the way. Right? Is that something right?
Absolutely.
I love the delayed clicker. Along with forecasting, we have academic, academic solutions, operational, equity, finance, human capital, technology. Right now, in the operational, you can hear about in some parts of the country where they have a few, the pool for academic support or finance support internally, we actually have staff that are there on behalf of the company, helping facilitate parts of the, of the, of either the finance arm or academic arm, until they can hire somebody to fill in, fill in spots. We know that there's shortages in a lot of things, teaching all the way up into administration. Qualifications, just to, look at these wonderful faces. So, you have Dr. Mike Razors at the top. He's going to be leading the project, the project overview, right? Out of my office, it'll be Georgia and I and Anna Lisa, helping actually build all the information up for the forecast and work with the rezoning part. Diana can speak to her, her part. We'll have some slides about that. But you and Danny, Daniel, will be helping with the community engagement portion of So, just some national overview of where we've been working. It's not some one-stop-shop out of Florida or Texas or California. When I opened, expanded the office into the, into our Dallas office over 10 years ago, Davis was known as a Southern California firm. We worked in about maybe 20, 20 states at that point. Once we opened the office, within about, within 10 years, we're working in 42 states and two provinces in Canada. This is, these are, these are known, known facts. People like to work with us because they're, they're referred to us. If you talk to anybody, we don't advertise. We don't pay for, pay to play at national or state programs. People will seek us out because they refer to us by another superintendent, another board member, and that's how we like it. Anything to add to that?
No.
No? Project plan. And I want to make sure everybody's kind of aware of this. We, it's not like A and then B and then C equals the final project. There are going to be multiple things happening simultaneously through this, whether we're out of my office doing the data gathering, Diana's doing the, getting ready to do the community input or creating some meetings internally to get advanced of that. Multiple tasks will be occurring during this process. So, if you see 1, 2, 3, 4, those are the different aspects. But one may be going on all the way through the process. Two will be happening simultaneously. Some things will be finished up in 3 and 4. The end result is, whether it's the full report, there's the rezoning part, there's the handoff of GIS, it happens over a period of time, a stretch of time. But we'd like to just make sure you're aware, it's not, we're waiting on Lauren's team. There's other teams that are working on stuff simultaneously. Okay. One thing that you'll know from our, our firm, from Davis MGT, nothing's in a black box. I'm not going to sit there and talk about stuff and show you some crazy calculation on a screen and look, doesn't that make sense? We, it's, it's basic math. We're looking at how many kids are coming into the, into the school district or how many are leaving. By the historic information from students, we're looking at the births to understand how many kids you could expect at kindergarten or pre-K, if you're offering pre-K. Some of the more important parts of this, because, and I know this just from driving in, you see development along the main interstate coming in. I see the smile. Multi-family homes being built just inside the district boundary. I mean, it don't have to be a rocket scientist to understand that. It doesn't matter what your student generation rate is, as those units increase, a percentage of those units will produce children. Some of the more important things to understand is, when we do the development research, we're not just working with the county and the, and the city to understand or get their spreadsheets. We'll be driving around. We'll be doing, we'll be doing overhead imagery and timelining, timelining the builds so that we can actually say, okay, that guy was kind of exaggerating when that phasing is coming in. They'd only had 75 houses. It's, it really is 75 houses, or it's 125. He must have under, under, underestimated when he, when we made the call. We'll drive up and look at some of the larger developments and work with the larger developers to make sure that we have that information. Because if you don't have that information, you start making decisions about rezoning. You better have an idea where those new houses are coming in and have that embedded into the software. So, when you start moving study areas around, you can have a better idea of what it looks like three, four, or five years down the road. There may be a situation where you go, we have growth, but if you look at it spatially over four or five years, it may be a bubble in one area, and it may not be one that is a trend that you need to plan on. Maybe it's something that's a hiccup, where maybe a couple of portables on a spot and not to worry about it five years out. Those are those questions, too. We don't want to, want you to think about moving kids around if you didn't need to Second, the third thing on this, I talked about first, and I've worked on both edges working in. You see the word mobility. It's not mobility like mobility of an apartment complex. It's mobility of your student population. We look at your student population spatially from each of the last three years and the current year snapshot to give us an idea of what are the, what are the ins and outs of the, of the student population spatially by each one of the elementary areas at each one of the grade levels that make up that elementary area. So, there, you could have high school student population that lives in an elementary area. You could see, oh, there's an actual growth, there's growth occurring in your older grades in this one specific area that's declining in your lower grades. Well, it helps us understand that that's a maturing area. As the students become older and they're not being replaced, you'll start to see that effect. Very cool stuff. And we can map it, which is always fun. On this, this is something I like to share with folks. When we're talking about rezoning, it's not somebody hiding in the back of a cubicle, moving blocks around and trying to figure out what the, what the answer is and then showing up with maps one day. It's the actual working with staff, get a better idea of what's, what are people seeing locally. And then, taking, taking advantage of the GIS, the tools that we use, to help them understand what if we move one area? Because we may go through a process and then say, oh, well, I'll give you a good example. I may go do it blindly and show up and someone go, oh, my gosh, that won't work because that, something that if you weren't local, you wouldn't have known it. So, we need to have a person or a set of people from the county part of the process when we first start looking at things initially. These are examples of county districts. Up in the upper right-hand corner, it's a district in Florida doing a workshop. Real simple stuff. We're there all day, unfortunately, no. For them, it was, we're all day, it was fun, because they got to look at things and ask the questions that they may not have been able to, they had the question, but they weren't able to see what that question would derive. And then, seeing it, it helps them ask the better question. What if we do this? And those workshops really help out. There could be ones with executive staff, the bottom right is a, is one with a city district with just... district with just, just the facility people, kind of just moving, moving stuff around by themselves, just trying to figure it out with consultation, right? And the bottom left, that's a, that's a small school district having a community session. Everybody's all dressed up in their shirts and ties and stuff, and we put the stuff online and allowed, and, and one of the, I think his business manager actually was doing the online thing, moving stuff and showing people how to look at the various zones. It was very, really good, interactive. All these things are part of the process, however detailed you want to get into it. Now, we talked about GIS. GIS, Geographic Information Systems. Everybody has, anybody that's in this business is using GIS. The only problem is, is they have to do it and they're creating scripts and having to kick out the scripts and then having to feed an Excel sheet table to see what that ramifications are of those changes. Schoolsite, which is a Davis product that's built on top of GIS, has been, has been in development for over 30 years, working with Esri to make sure that we're up on the current software trends, being able to share information and things like that, meeting the requirements to be a business partner with Esri. When we're creating, when you see a table, when we start producing information, that table is an output of this. When we start rezoning, rezoning is taking that information from the forecast and then starting to apply the, what, the what-ifs. Let's look at it now, what does it look like from five years now? Having that data built on top of GIS allows you to start doing the clicks, you know, clicking things, making the, the easy stuff. I remember a client one time said, oh my gosh, that's so easy. And I said, it is, because that person over there spent the last 80 hours getting the data ready. Okay? It is easy because it's there to be easy for people to make those decisions while we're sitting there in a room. We need to get the data together, student forecasts, making sure that we have the development information correct, and then be able to apply that in, within reason when we start looking at redistricting. Oh my gosh, you ready?
My turn. As Lauren mentioned, my name is Diana Goldstein, I've been with MGT for about 16 years now. And my area of influence is, is the community engagement piece. And we understand that studies like this one can prompt a lot of interest in the community and sometimes a lot of angst in the community, and that getting the feedback from both internal and external stakeholders is really important, a part of this process. So it's important that teachers and staff and parents and community members all have a voice in the, have an ability to have their voice in the concerns and have their questions answered about how this process is going on and what things are being considered. So our community engagement efforts are really twofold. First, we will do a series of meetings. We've proposed two in-person and one virtual meeting. Our recommendation would be that we would do one in-person meeting with employees of the district and then another for community and parents, but we certainly could tailor those audiences to whatever the district would prefer. The virtual meeting similarly could be for any audience. And those virtual meetings, we use Poll Everywhere technology so that that allows for large groups of people to respond to questions in real time. It's an app that people can just scan a QR code, the question's up on the screen, and they can respond to both qualitative and quantitative questions. And then the responses are available in real time. The great thing about Poll Everywhere is it records everything for us, so we've got a really good summary of all of the feedback that we got during a community session. We would rely on the district for managing the logistics and the scheduling of those meetings and marketing those to the public to make sure that we get good attendance. So the next piece of our community engagement is the online survey. That we developed with the district. We would probably be focused on mostly the same types of questions and, and information that we would have in the community meetings, but these would be to a broader audience. And the survey can be distributed by MGT if you have the contact information and are able to share that with us. We can send those emails out and send it to parents, employees, community, but we also understand that in some cases there's privacy issues or you don't have that information available, so we're able to provide you with a QR code or link that you could put on the, the district website or distribute in, you know, in listservs and things like that so that everybody can, can have their voice heard that way as well. And now, back to you, Lauren.
Thank you. So, help me turn that, sorry about that, go red, sorry. When you think about working with us, the idea is we're trying to use the data to make, help you make better decisions. It's data, but also we have the community engagement portion. We were talking before, we're doing some of this, doing rezoning in a county in Florida right now, and the conversations are, you know, what happens when this happens? And I said, well, we, we look at the data, but then we have this, we have the community engagement, that's when we start getting that, the personal feedbacks of what's going on. Because it's one thing to have us work on it, we can have the foundational, the foundational information, but also now we have to have that input. And so, you know, having the data-centric research from both sides, from the QD input, the foundational information that sets the story of what's going on will, will be the most important part of this. The understanding that we specialize in K-12, that's all Davis does. We have not, that's all we've ever done is working K-12. And having that focus is, makes it a pretty, it's a, I don't want to say we're, we're tunnel vision, but that's all we work on is K-12, K-12 impact. So understanding that we're, when you're working with us, that's exactly what, we're not doing anything else. Though we have other tools in the tool belt that we can bring in, the portion that we're talking about is what we, what is right in our bailiwick, student services, student information, forecasting and rezoning. The other part of this, just to, and we add this in here because people don't, just so you have a kind of an idea, we're an Esri Gold Partner. That's not given out to, you don't pay for that as you would something else. There's a pay thing to be part of a Gold Member, but you have to earn that level of membership with Esri. Esri is, has 10,000 partners and only 91 Gold Partners. We have quarterly meetings with Esri about our process, what's going on, how we can help in the community more. Engagement with the owner of Esri once a year to go over what's going on in K-12 and how we can better help school districts. So it's a bullet point, but it's a very important one that you need to keep, keep in mind when we're working with us. If there is something that's going on in GIS, we're in the forefront of getting that taken care of. And we can help relay questions directly to the developers of, of the software. But that's it, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, there it is, thank you. On the bus.
What questions do you have for us?
Board members, I'm going to start with Ms. Sandage first. Ms. Sandage, do you have any questions?
Oh, got it. Can you come back to me?
Sure. Mr. Tredaway, do you want to go?
No questions.
Mr. Furr?
Thanks for the presentation, but I don't have any questions. You covered it pretty thoroughly, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
I think I like the software, I think it's interesting. Does it show the student distribution or how do you, what am I going to see when I look at the software?
So, so we've had, we've, things back on, we've had, we'll have work sessions with, with the board if we need to, to go through and show you how things are functioning. It shows you grade breakdown, individual grade breakdown of an area or a, so we step back a second. When we build the data, the data's built at a granular level, study areas that make up elementary, that make up high school. Each one of those is its, can be its own forecast, okay? Each one of those forecasts can, will give a breakdown of how many kids are within that area and what that looks like over 10 years. So yeah, we can look at that. And then we can start looking at grade configuration changes and things like that. What if we went from a PK5 to a PK6 or a, or in the, in some of the northern parts, PK8, right? Some, you've seen that a lot in some of the other parts of county districts, the more, less populated areas are going PK8 just because it's easier on transportation stuff. Anyways, does that help?
Yeah, that's, that's helpful, but like a boundary change, if you wanted to move, move a line here, is it going to tell me the demographics changes that that would affect?
So, yeah.
Do I get to do the what-if stuff or is that something I'm asking you for?
Yeah, so, so that's, this is a great question. So I was fielding emails while we were sitting there from a state south of here with lots of water around it. And those are the questions, some board members that were at the last community meeting had some questions about certain things. And so I, I was putting stuff into web maps for them that was specifically with, with password protected for them so that they can look at the ins and outs of things based off of that. Same stuff that was shared to the board, but not in the, you know, the board would see it, but some people specifically wanted to look at it. So we were able to show you that. Or you can come into a work session, which we've done that before, it just depends on your state laws.
My, my, my brother's saying, obviously the public's going to come to the board.
Yes.
And they're going to, some people are upset, some people are not, some people have ideas.
Yeah.
They're going to present stuff to us. If there's something that is presented that maybe we haven't heard before, I may want to see what that looks like on the impact that that may have on, on what we're going to be asked to vote for. So that's, that's where that was coming from.
That was perfect, perfect setup, because that was me about 30 minutes ago answering the board member's question exactly that way. They're, they're, they're at the coffee shop and someone approaches them. And comes up with something that we didn't even think about. You know, because I've been doing this for, for 17 years. Been doing this since I was 16 years old. I've been doing this forever, but sometimes you get tunnel vision sometimes. You're working on stuff and you and your, the people that you're working with get tunnel vision and you then, transportation says something, you do that, and then somebody comes in and says, hey, did you know that certain times of the year you can't go north on that road? I said, and I look over at the transportation guy, did you know that? That happened in Orange, Orange County. I'm like, I did not know that. Transportation totally forgot about it, that it's a one-way during the, during the cold spells because of the incline, ice hits it. Those things are going to come up, maybe not here, but, no, that's what they ran into.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, let's see. We have worked with Davis demographics in the past, about seven years ago.
It's been a while.
Anybody on that team still working with us or who's?
So one gentleman went on, he's working with the police department. He's doing their GIS in Dallas. And then another gentleman is with the county planning commission now. So the only people that are there are, it's me. I was, I was still the, I was still the regional manager, still there, I'm the only holdout.
Okay, so you, you have some familiarity with our, with our area?
Yes, so, so working, so just so you all know, if you know, your district at one point had the software in-house, you had a, your facility department was working with GIS and Schoolsite, but not on the level that they would have been able to do this themselves. It can be quite intense.
I think it was some forecast, 10-year forecast.
And it was a build-out study, I think, too. Yeah.
That's all I've got at the moment. I appreciate your time, appreciate you taking the time to talk to us.
Ms. Escobar?
Hi, thanks so much for coming in. So community engagement, can you describe what a community engagement session would look like? For the public?
So, oh, sure. So those, we typically have, if we're doing a small focus group, we might have 20 or 30 people, but sometimes these kinds of community engagements would be a much larger group. We would have, rely on the district to tell us where would be the best place for that and what, what facility and help us with the logistics of it. We would be presenting to the community the, the information that Lauren's sharing, excuse me, getting over a cold, on where the, the study currently stands, and then fill them in as much as possible over, say, maybe 20, 30 minutes, and then give them an opportunity to answer, ask us questions. And those would be after the district meetings where we would have the, the employees of the district who would kind of go through those intensive workshops that Lauren talked about so that they really have a full comprehension of what is happening with the redistricting and have those folks be also as ambassadors and be able to answer some of the questions so that it's not just these two folks coming in from outside of the county to tell them what's going on, you know? Does that answer your question a little bit?
A little. I'm guessing with all your experience, you've dealt with negative meetings.
Oh, thank you.
So, so what do they look like and how do you handle that?
Well, that's a good question. You know, as I said when, when I started, I know that these, I had kids in public schools myself back in, when we lived in Tallahassee, and any change to boundaries is going to be sort of fraught with all sorts of anxiety, either having my children go to other schools, having other kids come into my schools, and, and we know that going into it. So we're sort of prepared for anything. And usually with, after having had the workshops and the, and working with the employees, we get a sense of where the community's going to be, where, what those feelings are about. And I think in a lot of respects, you know, ultimately you're going to end up with sort of a column A or column B. We're either going to have some overcrowded schools or some schools that just don't have the population to support them, or we're going to need to move some things around and redistrict. And so people can, I guess what I'm saying is that, is that if we can give them the data, as Lauren has explained, that shows like where folks are, where folks are coming in and where, how this redistricting is going to help each individual schools, mostly we can get folks to kind of come on board. Does that help a little?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. And can you talk about your experience with engaging stakeholders? For example, we as a board don't have the decision-making process when it comes to capital investment. So if you make a recommendation that we need schools in certain locations, we don't ultimately make that decision. So how do you help us engage with other stakeholders, like the county?
That's probably what I have a question for you.
What, on the capitalized improvements? Well, so, is your county supervisors approve the capitalized investment? Yeah, so, yeah. Part of this is, it's, it's sharing of information, so we have to make sure that they're attending the community part of the, of this. I think that, this is, so this happens in Florida. We have to make sure that we have at least somebody there representing your county as part of the, early part of the data, data sharing. So like when we have the first, first meeting of what's happening, the early forecasts of, of, of the, of the project, early community engagement, we need to make sure that they're involved so that they, because they're, they're the ones that have to make that decision and so they need to be part of that group of listeners, right? So we need to make sure that there's share, shared information to them that details the issues that are going to happen if things don't happen. We're not, going back to the district that's surrounded by lots of water down south, they have the same issue. So thank goodness this board, the board, the county supervisors were, several of them were at the, at the last community meeting. So they got to hear from parents along with the, as well as the presentation of what's, what's about to happen. So it was good. I don't know, I don't know how effective that is because you know how things are, the things, you don't know how quickly they'll move ahead, but maybe they'll help advance a half cent sales tax for something specifically or like they do in Georgia or in Florida. But those are ways that we can help you all get the word to people that are the decision-makers, decision-makers for the capitalized improvements.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Sandage, do you want to go now, ask your questions?
Sure, thanks. Thank you for the presentation and also thank you for your application. My question is, who in your opinion is your customer?
Are you, well, a customer as in the county?
Who in your opinion, when you do these types of projects or when you do a project such as what we're asking, who is your customer? Who are you working for?
Well, we're working for the county, so that's, we're using our knowledge to help facilitate a process. The county is our, we're working for the county, so, but what we, our findings are our findings regardless of who we're working for.
Thank you, that's my only question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're all done with the questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Y'all done? Do you have any other, any other comments, Mr. Lauter?
The only other thing I would add is that I hope you consider the presentations made to you tonight and be prepared to give us an answer so we can work diligently toward your contract up in March, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Lauter. Thank you for the presentations. Okay, board members, we just need a consensus to add this to the action agenda for our February 13 business session. Okay, great. We're going to move down to 5.02, our policies for approval on first read, and we'll have Ms. Sue Burns. Welcome, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. We have a full docket tonight. We have first read, second read, and then some technical edits. And let me go over your first read recommendations. Policy 4220, student insurance program clarifies that students and/or parents are responsible for paying accident insurance premiums, adds a section about catastrophic insurance to address the new statutory requirement, and this is strongly recommended. These are current practice already, so this is really putting into policy what we do as a district. And as another note, under the catastrophic insurance, our district also has our middle schools taking out catastrophic insurance. Then we have 4240, 7312, child abuse and related threats to safety on page two, revises language in B1, which puts it in line with NC State law, it's just a small change. Then policy 6507, 7403, physical standards testing for bus drivers. The policy committee has recommended this policy be rescinded. This is not a PLS policy, this is one that the district developed in 2013 and it's no longer relevant as our bus drivers have to, they have to have the DOT medical card to be able to get a bus license, so this is no longer needed. That wasn't a law when we had developed this one. Then we have 7240, drug-free and alcohol-free workplace. This is on pages six and seven, so basically, school officials are no longer required to contact an applicant's previous employer in most cases. And just in the notes, this will make more sense. As of January 6, 23, querying the, sorry, drug and alcohol clearinghouse is the exclusive means of complying with 49 CFR 40.25 with respect to employers regulated by the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. So they are no longer required to contact an employee's previous employers because they are able to access the drug and alcohol clearinghouse. So this is, just puts things in line with legislation. Any questions?
So Sue, so any violation would be listed on that clearinghouse is what you're saying, according to the policy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Walter?
Uh, this might be a question from Ms. Herndon. Catastrophic insurance, what is that costing us? And then explain again why we don't have middle schools not covered?
So middle schools, the schools each pay for their own catastrophic insurance and it's done through, you're welcome to speak to this if you want.
I don't know.
Okay.
All right.
So each school pays for their own catastrophic insurance, and Brian Tyson could explain this better than I because it's related to athletics. But they go through, it used to go through the high school athletic association and that doesn't happen anymore, but all the high schools use the same insurance provider to get a really great deal on that. The middle schools use a different provider, but they all use the same and they're all invoiced and paid for and it's, that's just, that's how we are with that in the, yeah, it's recommended, but it's what we already do.
I'd be interested in seeing what those costs are if that could be provided.
We can gather that for you tomorrow and get that out to you.
Yeah, yeah. I know Brian has that information, too.
Okay, any other questions about the first read policies, board members? Okay, so we will go ahead then and we'll put those on the consent agenda for our business meeting.
Okay, thank you. Second read, I've not received any, any comments or questions on these, so are there any further questions?
Still like to see 64, 6140 on action, I still don't agree with it.
Okay.
Which policy was that?
6140.
6140, I'm sorry. The one that defines the school day is starting at midnight.
Okay. So except for 6140, we will, is it, can I have a consensus to put those on the consent agenda? Okay.
Yes.
So we'll go to 5.04, policies with technical edits.
Okay, so I have two, two different items here for you that are in the same, in the same group. So I'm going to talk about the first group, policies with technical changes. These are from the fall 2023 updates. And per policy 2440, policy review and evaluation, the superintendent has the authority to make technical changes, including grammatical corrections and non-substantive updates to wording legal references and cross-references. These changes will be reported to the board at least one board meeting prior to their effective dates. So these don't go through your first read and second read, but they do go through you to approve those and they are, the ones for this group are all either legal reference changes or hyperlink changes. And you have that list and I put those documents in board docs.
Any questions about those? Pam, Ms. Escobar?
And just to confirm, you run this all through our legal team as well, right? If we're making changes to the policies?
Yes, this, these went through, actually by email, through our policy committee and Mr. Vogel, yes.
Thank you.
So the second group, this, I'm being transparent here. So back in September of 2021, we had these policies with technical changes and the board approved them all. And we started, Mr. Walter, I think you're going to remember this, we started notating at the end of the policies that these were technical changes only. Well, in 2021, these were approved, but they were never published. Just forgot. I don't know what happened, but they didn't go through and I caught that a couple weeks ago, so I just wanted you all to know that's why there would be this really long list of policies. You had no idea what it was. So I just wanted you to know that's what these are and these will be, I'll publish these when I do the other, the other policies. And my apologies for that. We really try to do, you know, a good thorough job and sometimes things fall through the cracks.
Okay, board members, any questions from Ms. Burns on these? Okay, so we will put those on the consent agenda as well. Thank you so much, Ms. Burns. We'll have 5.05, our budget amendments and summary of change in fund. Ms. Carol Herndon. Welcome, Ms. Herndon.
Good evening, board. Thank you very much. I'm honored to bring our fourth budget amendment for 2022, 2023 in front of you. Let's start with the top, yeah, right there. This is just a high-level summary of where our budget stands and you'll see that we are at $475.8 million with regard to our budget for 2022, 2023. And you'll see that broken down by fund across the top and then by our purpose codes along the side. We'll switch just briefly to the changes. Thank you. Net across all funds, we had a very minimal decrease in our budget via this number four amendment, just about $375,000, so not a significant change from budget amendment number three. And I'll walk through the different components if we could go to the final attachment. Yeah, right there. So a couple of different things going on. First of all, we'll start with our state budget. We amended our state budget downward by 2. almost $6 million for a couple of reasons I'll get to in just a second. That's the net impact to our state budget. We did have a couple of additional allotments. They were expected during this time of year from DPI and you'll see those summarized here, the largest of which was teacher performance bonuses. You might recall that for years we've paid teacher bonuses in January as it related to IB and AP test scores and also reading and math proficiencies in grades three through eight. The actual, the reading and math proficiency bonuses went away in the middle of the pandemic because we didn't have the associated testing. They were reinstated for this year, so we had a pretty sizable allotment to support those payments to our teachers that earned those bonuses in January of this year. Those additional allotments were offset by some adjustments that we made to reconcile our initial budget planning. Amounts to actual allotments received to date from DPI. The decrease was related to do two different things. First of all is our expected EC funding. In 2021, 2022, we received an additional EC allotment later in the school year we were expecting and are still a bit hopeful that that will happen again this year, but it has not yet and we're not getting real clear guidance from DPI with regard to that additional allotment. So in order to be conservative, we've adjusted our budget downward a bit in that regard. The other situation from a state budget perspective is we are required to make two transfers during the course of the year. And normally we submit these transfers in December and we get approval from DPI in January. One relates to the way we fund our five restart schools. We don't get incremental funding from DPI for our restart schools. We have to actually construct a restart transfer and so we take money from different buckets in our state budget and we transfer it to our restart schools and it is in that space that they can leverage their restart funding flexibility. And then the other is we have hired, as Dr. Bish and others have shared with you, our international teachers to help support our teacher vacancies and we are required to make a transfer from our classroom teacher allotment to the international teacher bucket, if you will. And so we made both of those transfers, we went through the processes in both of those transfers with DPI in late December. They have not yet been finalized and approved by DPI, so we don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet. We have to get their approval before we can finalize that in our state budget. I would imagine when they get approved, which should be this month, that you may see some of these decreases flip a little bit when we bring back budget amendment number five. That's my expectation, that's what happens normally. You didn't see that last year because we didn't bring our initial budget resolution to the board last year until late February. So that's why you didn't, we didn't talk about that last year is that we waited until I got on board to actually bring the initial budget resolution to, or in front of the board, so we didn't have a lot of amendments last year. So not to worry. Angela Fitzwater and I are working on the EC budget opportunities. We are pushing with DPI to see if we are going to get the incremental allotment that we hoped that we would like we did last year, but we are working tightly to make sure that all of our EC needs are funded regardless. And then I'll keep you apprised of when we get approval for our two required transfers in the month of February. A lot to say about state, but net-net, not a huge impact as it relates to our total budget amendment. From a federal fund perspective, we did receive three additional grants and some additional funding, so that's good. Most relate to our support of our EC programs. Ironically, while we're not certain what we're going to get from the state with regard to a potential additional allotment for EC, our December EC headcount was greater than our April and the federal government allot's based on that December, most recent EC headcount. So we're expecting some incremental federal funds to come later in this school year because of the increased number of EC students that we served as reflected in our December headcount. The state funds us based on last April's headcount, so there's a bit of a gap in reality, if you will. Capital outlay, we received an additional appropriation from our county of $1.45 million related to our Brown McAllister new school construction project and that appropriation was to cover construction costs and technology needs. In special revenue, we had a grant that materialized for Concord High School and then Kids Plus received another appropriation of the stabilization grant that we've talked about with you all several times. That has come in several different pieces and we received another almost half a million dollars as it relates to that in this budget amendment. So again, a lot of activity for a minimal net change to our total budget, but this is the budget amendment four that I bring to you for your consideration in next week's consent agenda. Any questions?
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you. It's a lot of numbers, so. Earlier, Superintendent Dr. Kapicki mentioned Project FAST. How does that, will we see that in the fifth amendment then?
It might be number six. We have to put together a spending plan and then a budget to support that spending plan and then we have to submit that for approval. We're looking to the mid-March, late March timeframe for that submission, but we won't get the allotment until approved, so that might transfer over into April. So number five will come in March, number six will come in April. So somewhere between five and six, we'll see that $490,000.
I don't like the EC thing, but I understand that that's, we don't have control of that. When do you get a better sense from NC DPI or do they give you any indication?
No indication, but we're pushing.
Okay.
We're staying on top of it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then we need a consensus to put this on consent? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to 5.06, our second chance EOG and EOC summer program with Ms. Reeves. Welcome, Ms. Reeves.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Kapicki, thank you so much for this opportunity. I am here tonight to present our plan, proposed plan for second chance EOG and EOC summer programming that would be occurring this June. So I'd be remiss not to begin by talking about our Y. And so certainly the whole intentionality in our second chance opportunity for students is really truly that, giving them a second opportunity if they did not perform well on the standardized test of an EOG or an EOC. The state does allow us to submit with board approval a plan that would allow us to give students a second opportunity to take an EOG or an EOC. And that's really what this work that we're talking about this evening is, is simply that, a second opportunity to champion all students, to give them an opportunity that they may not otherwise have, with just a one-shot standardized testing, one and done opportunity. And so just to give you some context around our program requirements, we have taken advantage of this opportunity over the last four years and then obviously took a pause. of this opportunity over the last four years, and then obviously took a pause when the pandemic occurred and we did not standardize test. But all of the program requirements do in fact require us to have local Board of Education approval, and the requirement from the state is actually that this program occur outside of the school year. So we do not actually have the possibility to retest students in an EOG or an EOC with the exception of third grade reading during the actual academic year. It would be required of us as a local school district to make a plan, propose it to you, submit it to the state, and then have that outside of the calendar year. This is really targeting students that are not proficient, so we would not be reassessing, and the state very clearly outlines that, assessing students because they want a better proficiency score. This would be simply for students that did not meet proficiency requirements during the EOG or EOC testing window, and then allowing them to return to us after the school year ends to be able to retest. This in no way would be required. This is just a second opportunity for students and families that may want to take advantage of the opportunity. And the nice thing is the highest score is reported to the state. So let's just say a student doesn't do well during retest, it would still be the highest score that is notated. It's also really important to note that this would not count towards our growth as a district, this would simply count towards our proficiency, but most importantly, it's about giving those students that second opportunity. A few things to talk about. Our proposed plan would actually be a two-day prospect, so while we say that it's a programming, it's really just two days. The first would be on Monday, June 12, and that would be when the remediation would occur per the state guidelines. And then we would reassess on Tuesday, June 13. And so this is a little bit different than our plans in historical years. We've actually done two days of remediation and one day of retest for a total of three days. We met with a steering committee and had a really great conversation with school leaders, families, and teachers. And the feedback that we got very candidly was that the remediation piece of it is happening prior to the school year even concluding, and therefore it was not necessary to have an additional day of staffing, transportation, and students being in the building. So that is really where that shift came from. And I, you know, we will be providing transportation, and breakfast and lunch will be provided during this programming. Just a few other specifics for you to note. So our assistant principals really work as our site administrators. They are the ones that do a lot of the testing coordination process through, throughout this. They are also the ones that are in charge of the invitations that go home. So obviously, we are specifically targeting a group of students that may have the opportunity to become proficient during a retest period. We certainly would not want to require or have a student go through the process that doesn't believe that they are going to meet proficiency standards. And then the curriculum and instruction team is the one that works really intentionally on providing the curriculum resources to maximize that remedial time to be able to support. And I will say that we've received, we've had tremendous success in comparison to the state with this program. So last year with almost a 38% pass rate, that is remarkably high across the state for this program with over 1,500 students participating. We also do have school nurses as needed, and so we work with our site administrators to really determine the need based on the students that are invited to this program and staff our schools accordingly. A few other things to note, so these are actually the program specifics in the areas of retest that can actually occur according to the state. You will note that we don't actually retest third grade reading during this time because they have two different opportunities to test based on Read to Achieve legislation. And so this just kind of gives you an idea of the schedule that we run. So obviously, that Monday, that would be the remedial schedule that we run to support with the reteach component of the summer programming, and then Tuesday would actually be the retest day for administration. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Board members? Mr. Walter?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm glad that we had 1,500 students take advantage of it last year. I guess it's great that we've got 38% have a second opportunity to pass that. The only question I have is you've got, last year, the budgeted amount was $40,000 for three days, and now we have a budget here for $65,000 for two days. What's the difference?
Great question. So, so the two biggest pieces are going to be transportation. Fuel costs have significantly rose, and very candidly, we went over budget last year, having no idea what type of fuel crisis we would be in, in June of last year. The second piece is that we no longer offer free breakfast and lunch, so we will be paying the catering fee for all of the participants that will be involved in the programming.
Thank you.
What is that, what does it look like, the first day?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Because I, I'm familiar with summer camp and teaching kids how to, just, they make it a little bit more fun. So what is, what does the day look like for parents who might not love the idea that they got this invitation?
Absolutely. That's a great question. So actually, that's part of the reason why we moved to the model that we did last year, which is that we did want it to be a very, championing all students in a culture that embraces students and does not feel any type of way in terms of punitive. And so the intentionality was that we moved from hub sites to individual schools because we felt very strongly that students had relationships with the schools and the faculty and the staff at their own individual schools. And so what that looks like is a student arriving, either via their parent dropping them off, walking because it's in their home district bounds, or potentially going on a bus, and they would be greeted, they'd have breakfast. All of the games and activities are very much review fun activities. Our specialists have been intentional in designing engaging opportunities where students almost feel like it is a review game session type day. I've seen reteach materials with Jeopardy and with collaborative partners, and so it is always framed as just a fun way to review before you have a second opportunity. And so I will say, in walking the schools during those days, it is, it is very lighthearted, it's lively, the students are able to connect with the staff, with peers, and I do think it makes a big difference that it is in their home school with staff they are familiar with.
Ms. Sandage, did you have any questions?
I did not.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board members, we will put this on the agenda for action for February 13 business session. Okay, Board members, we will move to 6.01, and I will need a motion to convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A3, and to consider confidential personal matters pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A6. Second, so I have a motion by Mr. Fur and a second by Ms. Escobar. Take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are now in closed session. Thank you to everyone that came to our meeting tonight and our presenters.